To a quarter. May I have a roll call, please?
Trustee Stevens.
Here.
Trustee Myers.
Here.
Trustee Compton.
Here.
Trustee Landry.
Here.
Trustee Swenson.
Trustee Walshiger.
President Fannerstall.
Here. The pledge of allegiance will be led by Trustee Stevens.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, unuttered, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
At this time, if there are any public comments for items that are not on the agenda, and there are none, the first item on the agenda for tonight is a consideration of a motion to approve the village board minutes from the January 22 meeting.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the minutes. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? That motion is carried. Next item on the agenda is a consideration of a motion to approve the vouchers for payments in the amount of $10,320,153.16.
I just wanted to give everyone a reminder, the bills this time are so high because $7.2 million of that goes to all the school districts for the January tax settlement. That's money that we're obligated and required to pay them based on what we've collected. And then if you recall, in December, we did the debt refunding and the debt borrowings, the debt issuance. The $2.2 million that we refunded is part of that $10 million. So that makes up 9.4 of the 10.3 million.
Thank you.
My move, we pay the bills for $10,320,153.16.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any discussion?
I have a question. I was pretty adamant about us going with the EMT situation, you know, with our department and all the effort we've done. Just here on our bills, I was looking at Lake County Rescue, Medicare, paramedic intercepts, $1,275. In other words, because we don't have a paramedic yet, which is coming, we have to pay these communities because we have to take somebody here that's sick, take them to meet somebody from Della Field to get the approval so they get the extra medicine, and then go to the hospital. So now we're eliminating that by going with our EMT program, which we've needed for years. And I just, but that's $1,300 right there. We had to spend this month just to meet somebody. It's crazy. So when are we going to have that paramedic service up and running?
I was supposed to be notified by the state at the end of last week. As the state matters, they did not contact me, but we should be, we're ready. We've got the medications. We've got the additional units ready to go. And any day, as soon as we get state approval, we're going.
And this is like, I mean, this is, we're saving money by having it, you know? And everybody's worried about how much it's going to cost us. It already costs us $1,300 just not having it. So that's all I, I thought that's pretty important.
But some of that comes back from the Medicare or the insurance company, don't they?
Correct. We bill the patient that amount. We get charged $425 every time we call in a paramedic.
But we don't get reimbursed for the intercepts.
We do bill that to the patient, and if it's in the collectibles, it will come back to the village.
But not to Medicare.
Correct. Medicare pays a very small amount.
Right. That's my only, my comment.
Can you add to that, Chief Dean?
No, we're excited. You know, you've known my enthusiasm for years, and trust me, if I could get the state to move a little faster, I would certainly have them faster. But I've been in contact with them, and they assured me that it was going to be the end of last week, and I'm hoping it'll be this week.
Save us some money, will you?
I will try, sir.
Any other discussion on the bills? Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
Stand.
That motion is carried. Next item is a consideration of actions related to the licensing and permits, actions related to the consideration of the issuance of a Class B intoxicating liquor license for the premises located at 418 Merton Avenue, Java Services LLC. Heidi Nugent is the agent. First, we will open the public hearing. Is there anybody here that would like to speak in that public hearing? Seeing as there is no one, we will close the public hearing. Now we will move on to the items, or we need to take the consideration of the request for that license, correct? The public hearing is closed now, but as a board, our next item on the agenda is to discuss, or if the board wants to, it's a consideration on the agenda is to discuss this request that is in for that license.
I think that it makes sense. We got that license, and I think we should, it should be moved to approve.
Okay.
She wants to serve drinks in the restaurant area.
Yeah, I'll discuss it once we get a, once we have it out there.
I'll make a motion to approve.
I'll second.
Okay, it's been, it's been moved and seconded. There was stuff included in our packet that came, administrator Cox had put stuff in the packet because there's a history sometimes in some of these different situations when it's not just a straight bar or a straight restaurant. So someone is in for this license, you know, the Pink Mocha, and it's a cafe. Right now, they, in fact, right now, I think I'm going to turn it over to the administrator because he's very up on exactly what's going on over there. They're serving some drinks, but they want to serve.
Sure, let's just remind you all, first, the history at Pink Mocha in terms of alcohol licenses, and then I'll just remind you of overall the alcohol licenses situation in the village. So Pink Mocha has a Class B beer alcohol license and a Class C wine license. The beer license permits, as my moniker for it suggests, beer and other fermented malt beverages. The wine license allows, of course, wine and wine-related beverages. What she is applying for tonight is the intoxicating liquor license, which allows for hard spirits like vodka, gin, et cetera, et cetera. The item I'll remind you of is that the Class B license for those hard liquors is a quoted license. In other words, the village only has a certain number of them based on state law. We have 13 of them, as a matter of fact, and we have 12 that have been issued. The one that we possess right now is one that was recently revoked from another establishment. That is the license that Ms. Nugent is applying for, for her business. In addition to the 13 regular licenses we have, we have, as a reminder, five what are called reserve licenses, and those are the ones that carry that $10,000 initial issuance cost with them. We have five of those. Two of them have been issued, so we remain with three. So in terms of open liquor licenses, the village currently has four, one regular, and three reserves. Just felt that that was appropriate for you to know and remember. As you know, you've had a conversation not too many years ago about issuing a license to an establishment that, as President Fannerstall alluded, was not a traditional restaurant or bar. Now, in that case, it was a service business. It was a retail operation, a service business, and the village board opted not to give a quoted license away. And in that case, we made some arrangements, and ultimately, they got a wine license, which is what they wanted. Primarily, that was the product they wanted to sell. So reviewing that conversation, I just wanted to let you, remind you of that and make sure that you had the opportunity to talk about this. Certainly, Ms. Nugent runs an operation that is a restaurant and currently has some alcoholic beverages on her menu, and it's up to you. Obviously, you've made a motion to the positive at this point.
I want to state, I jumped the gun. I want to withdraw my motion to approve.
I'll second that. I need seconding. Okay.
Then I'll make a motion to approve because I think you need a Bloody Mary with eggs benedict.
Yeah, I'll have a little gin on the rocks for breakfast.
I'd like to explain my reasoning for, in looking at this, we have some $10,000 licenses, which I think are ridiculous, but the state mandates it in all their wisdom. But this one license that we have that belonged to.
Boogers.
Something's got to go in there again, okay? This is a reasonable license. This is the one that's the normal price. Something will go in there again. It could be another restaurant with a bar. We also have the possibility of something happening at Hartland. I'm looking at the empty lot where we used to have the roller rink. Someday, that's going to get developed, and that's prime property up there. That could become another restaurant that needs a license. Look at Buffalo Wild Wings or something like that. I would hate to have something like that say, well, Hartland has to charge $10,000 for a license, and that would be their deciding factor, not coming here. So I'm looking at that. I'm looking at the property that Simon Manueli has downtown. The whole ground floor eventually can become commercial. That could become something that would need a liquor license. When I look at Pink Mocha or Birch and Banyan or something like that, for the occasional Bloody Mary to give a $10,000 break doesn't make sense. So if they have a license that allows them to have beer and wine, I'm not a mimosa drinker, but isn't that made with champagne? That would be a wine. That would be a beverage you could have with your meal. But I'm sorry I made the motion to begin with to approve it. I wasn't thinking when I did it, but I am definitely opposed to this, and those are my reasons.
I'm in full agreement with Karen.
Okay, so one thing that I need to run a question by because I don't have the Roberts' Rules book right in front of me, do we need a vote for this, these to be rescinded?
Well, I suppose there's two ways to handle this. There's two ways to handle this. One, an individual who makes a motion certainly is not obligated to vote in favor of their own motion. So the board could simply fail that motion, and the impact of failing a motion to approve is that the license is not approved. So that certainly is a possible way to go here. In other words, just proceed and let the votes come where they may. Alternatively, if Trustee Compton doesn't want to have made that motion, I suppose you can either, I would think the cleanest way would be to somehow withdraw that, allow the withdrawal, and I think Trustee Myers has already indicated he would replace that. But I think it's easiest, frankly, to just proceed and let the vote be taken.
That's fine with me.
Okay.
Thirteen.
That's it. Trustee Myers, are you okay with that?
Well, if, well, we vote on Karen's, and if it says they say no, and then is it still open to have another one? Another motion?
Remember the motion on the floor. Pardon me. I'm sorry, go ahead.
It all depends on how it works. Technically, according to the rules, to the best of my knowledge, unless someone corrects me and says that's wrong, the board would be asked at this time if we will allow Trustee Compton to remove her motion. Because she made a motion and she would like to remove it, she will be allowed to remove her motion, and at that time, we will also be able to decide if, then therefore, Trustee Stevens is not seconding that motion. So we would be back to square one at the beginning of our consideration of this item.
I'll go back to square one.
Okay, so.
Because I was always informed, when there's a motion and a second, and you ask for a count on it, if it's defeated, that's all right. But you've got to go through the procedure. I may be wrong. We've done that before.
Okay.
And if we change something, that's fine.
I've read on it since we didn't call for the a's and nays, so to speak, and because the person that made the motion decided she wants to pull that motion back, we can vote to allow that to happen. And I think that that's almost the cleanest way, and we'll.
I would suggest to you that you have a motion in the affirmative on the floor.
Okay.
To award the license.
Yes.
That is the cleanest motion one can have, regardless of who made it and however it was seconded. That is the cleanest motion you can have, is a motion to grant the license.
Okay.
If you proceed on that vote, the five members of the village board can make that decision.
Okay.
And Trustee Compton doesn't have to vote for her own motion, as I said, so.
Okay. Trustee Myers, are you comfortable with that? If we take.
I'll go back. After the.
You have a motion to approve on the floor.
Okay, if the motion is disapproved, is not approved, can another motion be made?
After the first one is either.
What would that motion be? I mean, you could.
To approve it.
Okay, hold on. We need to decide, well, no, this doesn't have to be that difficult. I am going to, I'm going to ask that we call the que, I am calling the question. Karen, our, Trustee Compton has requested that her motion be pulled off the table. I understand, it's just, it's getting, people are getting confused. I want to see that motion pulled back out of respect for Trustee Compton. She made, she did something, she didn't, it was just a slight error. She wants to see it pulled back. We're going to get back to square one. I am going to request that I'm going to entertain, I'm going to make the motion, I'd like to make the motion that we vote on whether or not we will allow Trustee Compton's motion and Trustee Stevens' second to be pulled off the table.
But the original motion, I had seconded.
Trustee Myers seconded that.
This is the original motion. Stevens did the withdrawal.
I seconded the withdrawal.
Right.
She made.
Oh, okay. Will this board allow, does anybody want to second pulling the question of whether or not we'll allow Trustee Compton to pull?
What are you asking?
Okay, a motion was made to approve the license.
Yes.
That was then seconded, okay? At that time, we talked about the exact situation and everything that was going on and the stuff that was included in our packet. At that time, Trustee Compton realized that wasn't the motion that she wanted to make, and she was fully entitled, according to the rules in which we operate, that she can pull it off the table because a's and nays had not been called or even begun. We were in discussion. She has decided, through discussion and finding out, that she didn't agree, so she is allowed to pull that question off if she wants to.
Okay, but are you waiting for a second or something on that, or?
Yes.
You seconded that. You seconded that.
Okay. I'm going to ask for a vote. This is to pull, that allows Karen to pull it off. All in favor?
Aye.
I'm against it, but I got a question. It's come up, and this is coming up again. I was always brought up, when you have a motion and a second, you've got to do with what to do with that motion. You can't, you can't, without taking it up for a vote, you can't just start another motion. Now, this is the second time we've done that, and I questioned.
Actually, Dick, it's not, and I'm going to.
No, and let me get done. I think, fine, whatever you want to do, you do it, but get an attorney's view on that. Because I was brought up that way. Once you have a second, you've got to vote on it. And if she made a motion that she, like Karen did, then she don't, not vote on it or vote against it. And you come out real simple. The vote fails for lack of a vote. But just screwing around with one vote on top of another one, I was always told that's wrong. Now, I went, now, you should go get the attorney, and whatever you do tonight on that, get an attorney's opinion.
We're getting quite technical, and we'll move through this quick.
Yeah.
I am open to doing this however the board wants to. However, I'm going to include, because it's the second time that I'm sitting here in front of a group of people with someone saying that it doesn't happen, and after the last time it happened, I did check, and a person is allowed and is granted the right under the rules in which we operate to pull their motion off the table if it hasn't been voted yet. That doesn't mean it will be pulled off. They can request from the board that it be pulled. Dick, you're saying, no, it cannot be.
No, I'm saying, I was always, I was always told that for years.
Okay.
We did that.
Let's vote on that original motion then that Karen made, and we'll see where that goes. The problem there is that this is where second motions on top of motions get. Once this is killed, I don't think we can pick up the motion again.
Well, let me say two things. One, I thought you just took a vote on your motion, but that notwithstanding, there is a process for reconsideration. Usually, it requires that it come up at the next meeting.
Good. All right.
And someone in the winning side has to make that motion. But that's a technical.
I was just trying to go through the motions to get us back to square one, and Trustee Landry, no disrespect, I was just trying to, if she made a mistake, I was trying to help her out.
No, and I can understand that, but somewhere on, now, this is the second time within a couple of months we went through this, and all I'm doing is we should clarify it. Because I was always brought up, once you get a second, if you don't get a second, the motion dies. But if you get a second, now, and I may be wrong, maybe change.
The reason it came up twice is the pride of, I don't know how often it happens, where someone makes a motion, and then another motion comes up, and someone else seconds it, so you've got these two going on at the same time.
No, we had, and the one I'm talking about, we had a first and a second, and then when we were, before we got the vote on it, we had another motion.
Right. I got you.
But I mean, no.
I was trying to work it, I'm trying to work it backwards, the way that, the best way that I know of the book. So all I can go off of is the rules. That's all I'm trying to do.
But I mean, we can take our administrator and run it that way, but all I want to do is clarify this. Because now, I haven't seen that come up before, but now it's been twice.
I will run it, I will, we will email.
So do whatever we want. If we want, if she wants to pull it off, and the board goes along with it, fine.
That's what we just voted on.
That's what you just voted on.
Oh, I thought it didn't pass. That's why I was, I thought it did not. Okay, so it's four to one. Okay, so that motion has been removed. Now, we have the other motion. That is, Karen, you made the motion that you wanted to deny, and Trustee Stevens seconded that. Is that correct?
I didn't make a motion to deny.
Not to like, to remove.
You didn't, just to remove?
Yep, just to remove.
All right, Trustee Stevens, or Trustee Myers, you had the second that was on there. Would you like to?
I will remove.
You will remove your second. Will the board allow that? I'm guessing they will.
Yeah.
Okay, I'm going to go with it. They will. So with that being said, we're back to square one.
I'll make a motion that we approve, the issuing of the license.
I will second that motion. It has been moved and seconded.
A little discussion.
To approve. Let's discuss this.
Yeah. The idea of us, when you go back to like Bulgars, we, what was it, a year or almost 10, 12 months, we negotiated, does he want the license or doesn't? It was inactive. We've got this parking lot, this empty place, it used to be the best fish fry in the area, and it's an open field, it was owned by a bank. It's owned by a bank. Now, the bank was supposed to build there. I just don't, no, I just hate to limit one of our, one of our businesses from expanding and getting, you know, some more on some thing that's not even here. I mean, if somebody else comes in, believe me, if it's a big franchise company that wants to come in here, $10,000 isn't much, you know? So I, I think that, I just want to benefit the things that we have here, support our people.
I personally think that for the amount of use that it's going to get, it's a waste of our liquor license. Because it's a small operation. How many drinks are they going to serve in a day? Not many. People aren't going to be drinking at eight o'clock in the morning, and I don't know what their late hours are, but I think it'd be wasting a liquor license. If they've already got beer and wine, that's all that, I think that's already done.
And I tend to agree with that.
Sure. And for myself, I kind of, I feel more along the lines of, and we're just having this discussion here, but I feel more along the lines of, we have it there, we have this license, and if anything, it would be the larger place that could afford it.
Why waste it?
Well, no, I'm just explaining why I was, why I seconded the motion and why I'm for it. We have someone that's been an established business for a long time in Hartland.
No, they haven't.
We have someone that's been established for a long time in Hartland, the what I consider a long time. They've been a good business, they've been an established business, they've gone through a move, you know?
Waited for.
And I'm just voting for it because I think that it's best for, I think that if the license is there and someone meets the stipulations upon which the license can be granted, there's not a drink limit, there's not this, there's no other stipulations other than meeting the criteria, and since we have additional licenses after that, I'm just saying why I'm for it. I'm not, you know, I'm not, I'm not saying you're wrong. I'm saying why I think it would be a good idea to, why I'm for granting a license. That's all I was saying. I'm not arguing you are.
I wouldn't be outspoken to say I think you're wrong.
That's okay.
Because it's a waste of, it's a waste of a liquor license that, and the small amount it's going to be used. Once again, I repeat myself, they've already got beer and wine. I've been in there, it's not the type of place you want to sit and have martinis and everything else. It just isn't that atmosphere.
For myself, I have, there's more than just this license. But I just said my piece on why I'm for it. I don't want to, I'm not going to argue. I'm just, I, and I, you know, I respect that.
I didn't know quantity of consumption was a prerequisite for a license. Because if you look at Bulgars, I don't really know anybody that spent their whole night down there drinking martinis.
I don't know. I don't drink, so I wasn't in there at night.
But if you don't drink, then why are you worried about other people that do drink that might enjoy it? I mean, I just don't, I didn't know there was restrictions or limitations on, you've got to sell this much before you can get a license. That might put some people in jeopardy, you know? If they don't sell a lot of wine, or if they don't sell a lot of booze, you know?
I just feel that scene, the combination Class B tavern licenses are limited. You can only have, was it one for every 500 population? And since the state came out with this ridiculous $10,000 fee, I just feel it's going to, somebody who wants to come in, say that it's not a big corporation or something, say it's not a chain, but just somebody who wants to come in and open a tavern, they're not going to make a lot of money on drinks, you know? So $10,000 is a lot of money to lay out front when you're still putting in your equipment and building up a business. And I just don't feel that these licenses really are geared for restaurants where it's just maybe a Bloody Mary. I mean, people aren't going to go for breakfast or lunch or dinner at a Pink Mocha or a Birch and Banyan and have hard liquor drinks like martinis and Manhattan's and Old Fashioneds. It's going to be an occasional light drink. And I just feel that really is kind of a waste of a light, reasonable license when you're forcing somebody else to pay $10,000 for the same license for a bar where they're going to actually have bar business, not just a restaurant serving drinks, but a bar.
Right. And I understand what you're saying. And it's not, you know, it's not an argument, it's just we both have our, you know, we all up here, and that's why we have a board, so that we can, you know, we can, there's not, you know, those lights, no hurt feelings, it's just voting on what we think. Do you have anything to add to this?
Well, if that's turned down tonight, that gives us two regular ones and three.
No.
One regular.
This is the one and only regular one.
Three, and then three.
And three reserves. So we have four licenses, but this is the only one with the.
Yeah, one left, one license left that don't pay the $10,000.
Right.
That's this one.
That's this one.
That's this one.
Yes.
There are no more. The next, the next one is $10,000.
So, and if we don't do this license, then the person that is going for the license that would be, going for this license then would be forced to pay the $10,000 because we're withholding this license from them. So, but I think, does anybody have anything new that they want to add to this conversation? Okay, it's been moved and seconded to approve this. All in favor?
Aye.
No.
All opposed?
May.
Take a roll call.
I think I'll, I'll go do a roll call.
Trustee Stevens?
May.
Trustee Myers?
Yes.
Trustee Compton?
No.
Trustee Landry?
No.
Yes.
So we have two yes, three no.
So that dies for, on the three, two, correct? Even though, okay, I'm so used to there being four, needing the four, so I'm sorry, it was the first time I've had two, uh, two absences. Okay, the next item on the agenda, um, are items related to St. Charles Fish Fry on February 16th, February.
I'll just stand here. Did we just get denied?
Can you go?
Scott Nudger from Pink Mocha, did we just get denied?
Yeah.
Uh, it, it was just denied, yes, to.
All right. Just to say to everybody, you know, my wife has an established business to grow. And, uh, I listened to the banter, which was very unprofessional, how he called you out. But you just denied something for potentially the future. That is just odd. She's expanding her business and in communication to do that. This is why we're here, to expand the community and different things. And all you looked at was, I think he owns a bar back there, well, maybe if we get another bar owner in here, we can help put him out of business. Or if we can do another, a big conglomerate restaurant and put the Pink Mocha. We're not Bertsch and Banyan, can I keep hearing this? We're a full establishment, we do breakfast, lunch, we do a lot of Bloody Marys, you should come by the Bloody Marys. We don't do one or two, we do dozens. So you, you've decided to hamper the Pink Mocha to expand. You, you've just decided for her, and I heard him, you, I'm not exactly sure when he called you out, that you're not very smart. I mean, this is unbelievable to me, I don't know if you ever run a business, I'm not insulting anybody, but I do. And you just took a baby step away. She's in negotiation to expand her lease, to expand the building. And you took that away without a consideration from Mrs. Compton. Well, maybe somebody else bigger and better will come, and they can't afford 10,000, so here, here's what should happen then, right? My wife should just write a check for 10,000 and she would get one.
Sir, I, and I understand.
That's odd.
I understand that you're.
I can't see it here, quiet.
I, well, I.
I mean, you were called out, I mean, you were actually called out. So the bar owner over back there, we should just get a bar in here. Uh, it's just a very odd, this was the most unprofessional meeting I've ever been in.
I'm, I'm very.
Unbelievable, I just felt the voices.
As the presiding officer, if this is the most.
So how do we go forward, Jeffrey?
If this, uh, going forward, what will happen after this is that I will ask the administrator how we move forward and let you know how, Heartland will let you know how to move forward. As you know, and you just watched, I didn't vote to deny the license.
No, 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 and I really appreciate that, but the common sense conversation didn't even happen. You tried, Pink Mocha's established, somebody called out kind of negative, you, you didn't pay for us to reopen, just so you know. I paid a lot of money to reopen it on top of it.
Sir.
Nah, I'm just wondering.
No, I, I understand that, however, because of the way and the rules in which we operate, I'm not shutting you down. I understand that you are upset.
Oh, I'm pissed.
That it was just, and I understand that, however, in, when you have multiple people and you're going to vote on something, we voted, there's some of us that thought.
Come out, Jeffrey, the common sense is you have an established business that's looking for growth, but on this side of the board says, you know what, just in case somebody, a big business comes in, they should get it for free. But the little guy, the little person shouldn't have that opportunity. I think you should all be ashamed of yourself, and this is an embarrassment. I'm gonna speak for my wife because this is wrong. I run a company, I would never do it that way, and I wouldn't have called you out the way it was, so have a good night, but that was an embarrassment.
I, I am very sorry that you feel that way.
I think the anger should be directed at the state of Wisconsin for doing what they did with tavern licenses.
Wisconsin not supporting your local business.
The state of Wisconsin is the one that put $10,000.
I'm not gonna support my local business to the what if. The what if, what five years from now, the what if? What if, what if she could have doubled the size of the local business?
We need to come to order that we can't just sit, and I am very sorry that anyone is.
This is wrong, and you know it's wrong.
So I can't say anything?
Yeah.
Well. Can you make it very brief?
Yeah.
Because no one came up and said anything during public comments, and now we're, and I.
You know, this is my, like, second one that I've ever been to, so I don't really know how the whole gist of it goes. But I know Wachshut State Bank owns that, um, vacant land, and they don't plan on selling it for a really long time. And they don't even know if a restaurant would ever be built there. But I am a small business looking to grow, and that was a part of it. And taking that away from me, so my lease is up in three and a half years, I might as well just go. And then hoping that your big restaurants, your big other restaurants with bars will, um, expand and, you know, make more competition in the small community. We don't need any more bars, we don't need any more big restaurants, because that, like, that land is huge. So that would just knock out the rest of us everywhere.
And I can, I can understand you being upset, and where we're going, just so that everybody here knows, I want to make sure everybody, including yourself, knows, no one person has more power on this board for a greater vote. So I'm just letting you know, no one up here can say, no, the vote wasn't good.
No, I understand.
Okay, I mean, we have to take the vote.
But I just wanted to let her know, and let them know, that I've been around for a really long time, 27 years in business. And I wanted to take it to the next level, but when someone puts the damper on it, you just can't move when you're really small. And, but the big can get bigger, but the small can't.
Next item on the agenda, again, is these, uh, items related to St. Charles Fish Fry on February 16th, February 23rd, March 2nd, March 9th, March 16th. Uh, first item is a consideration of an application for a temporary Class B beer license.
I'll so move.
I'll second. Any discussion? All in favor? Aye. That motion is carried. Next item on the portion of that is a consideration of an application for a temporary operator's license.
Also for the St. Charlie.
Yeah, for the fish fry, it's all, this is all part of that.
Also moved.
Moved, I'll second it. Any discussion? All in favor? Aye. That motion is carried. Next item on the agenda is consideration of applications, uh, for an operator's license with a term ending June 30th, 2018. And... I don't have the names in front of me, guys, sorry.
Sure.
They didn't pop up. Thank you. That is for Sarah Yates, Marissa Blumer, Samantha Geisler. These have been recommended for approval by the police chief, and they have successfully completed their responsible beverage service course. Sorry, I didn't have it pulled up.
I'll so move.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve those. Um, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. That motion is carried, I believe everybody voted for it. Next item on the agenda is a review and direction related to, uh, revised request from the owner of the property east of 1270 East Capital Drive to divide the property into three parcels without municipal utilities instead of the original two. If you want to, you know the drill.
Yep. Craig Geisenhut, I'm the property owner on Capital Drive, the old Slugger's establishment. Um, here basically trying to get, uh, get, uh, an approval on a new zoning code, I guess. I've been going back and forth with, uh, with Dave on, um, what Heartland would like to see for the rules for splitting the property. Um, I'm pretty much in agreeance with, with his most recent recommendation, after my first couple hurrahs were kind of turned down. Um, I, I like everything that he, he worded, I, I don't think anything's too unreasonable. Um, the only thing I ask is, uh, the width of the lot size. He's got it written out at 120 feet wide. I would like to make it 110 feet, so I can make three properties instead of the two, because my property's only 30, 30 feet wide. If it's 120 feet wide properties, I can only get 120 footer and then a 210. This way, if I do the 110, I can do three properties.
And that would be 110 frontage and two?
The, the shallowest lot at its shallowest point would be 250 feet deep. On that same lot, because it's a, a, a triangle, on the other side it'd be like 340 feet deep.
And 100 foot, and 100 foot frontage.
110, 110 foot frontage, correct. So, and if you look down the block, you know, Heartland on, we have properties ranging from anywhere from like 70 feet wide to 200 feet. So i- in Heartland, it's, it's consistent with what they're ready. Um, I'm able to meet the 30,000, which, uh, Scott Hussinger, the building inspector, really was pushing for, um, the 30,000 square feet. So at 110 feet wide, we can make that, uh, make that minimum, uh, square footage, no problem.
Now, the other two lots would be 110 too, or 110?
The other, the other two lots would be 110 feet wide, but they would both be over an acre. So the first, the small one, the one on the west side, would be about two-thirds of an acre, be, uh, right around the 30,000 square feet.
Yeah.
And then the next two lots would be over an acre.
And why did you tell me the frontage was on the other two?
Uh, they'd both be, um, I could break it down equally.
I mean, just approximately.
110 feet.
110 too.
But the one is 113, right?
Well, yeah, there'd be two 110, one would be 113. Or I can keep it simple, make them all 111.
No, I don't.
You have it, right?
Yeah.
Okay, you were given, uh, so it's 110 to the farthest west lot, and then 113 for the middle?
Yeah.
And then 110 with curved lines going, uh, perpendicular to the, uh, the right of way.
I kind of need to know what, what I can and can't do, so I can get the CSM drawn up and go with my plans. It's, it's a, I can't commit to anybody without a direction from, from you guys. So, um, I'm hoping, uh, hoping.
Could you have a question, trustee Myers?
I just think, I mean, the way we got that property to begin with, because the communities, we wanted to straighten out the lines, and so they threw that sucker in. And it's just been an eyesore, it's been nothing but, you know, our police department always liked that particular area, kept them busy. But, um, you know, 110 versus 120, and when there's 113, I, I think having, uh, turning that into a nice residential, you know, some nice houses, I think it's a great idea. And I, I'm not concerned about, you know, an extra 10 feet, uh, or an extra seven feet as far as width in the front. Uh, I think it's, you know, real asset to, uh, that area, and it's gonna help everybody in that neighborhood.
So I'm just, I was curious, because my lot is 77, and I didn't want it any smaller when the other property came up. It has, uh, so I think, I mean, this, I got no problem with this.
Yeah.
Outside of the fact that it doesn't go to, it's got to sue the planning commission for that change, isn't it?
Yes.
Yeah.
So I'd recommend that the planning commission listen to the, what the board's recommendation would be to, uh, approve that, the variance.
Well, it's not.
You want to do that, or send it back to the planning commission?
Send it to the planning commission with our, with our recommendation.
I think that your real question of what you're asking actually is, because it still has to go in front of the planning commission either way. Your question was that you wanted the frontage to make it possible to get the three properties instead of, you wanted it to be 110 instead of 120?
Correct, correct.
Okay, and you were asking, okay.
I like everything that Dave's.
The fundamental question is, is the village board okay with three when the original request was for two? And if the village board is okay with three, as Mr. Geisenhut and I have talked about, there are ways that we can get that number down, um, in a rational way.
Okay, all right, well.
But you aren't thinking we're not bypassing the planning commission by us?
This is still going back to the planning commission.
Yeah, it has to, but.
This is still going to the planning commission.
I would just prefer to send it back to the planning commission without recommendation.
I think that's the way it should go, really, I, I hate to be the one that, that, that always pushes something in. And, and I've got no problem with this, they can read the meeting on it, but it should go to the planning commission.
Well, that, that's where, that's where it's going to go.
Because they haven't seen it, so that's where it should go. And if, if you want to make a, uh, without a vote, I, I don't know.
Did we get, was there a motion? Was there anything?
No motion.
I tried to, but I didn't know if we were gonna be making a motion.
We can, I mean, we can make a, a motion on recommendation, it doesn't mean that it sets it in stone, it means that we'll be letting the, like, you know, we can either say, all right, well, whatever the planning commission says, or we can say, hey, we recommend that since we're falling short by whatever, uh.
It wouldn't even be that detailed, just say you vote for three.
I'll make a motion that we recommend this go back to the planning commission with our, what do you want to call it?
Period.
The 110 foot width? I just need something, because.
To contain the width of the change he wants to make, I see no problem with it.
And I'm just gonna, kind of, I guess, since this is a discussion, I can ask, it's a, we, we already have prepared, uh, something that's going to the plan commission?
Yeah.
That, is that going to stay relat-, or, I guess for myself coming in the meeting, I thought that would ideally stay the same. However, it was a question on the frontage, or is there more to it than that?
First off, by order of business, you do have a motion that's been half-made. I don't know if you want to finish that.
There hasn't been a second.
I know, you want to let that die, or?
I was, well, I was kind of clarifying on what we were doing, so, and I'm, I mean, no, I'm not letting it die. If someone wants to second it, they can, but I would, before I seconded it, I wanted clarification.
I can just remind you where we are in the process, the planning commission, uh, saw this in January and, um, reviewed a different version of this that had requested three, but two smaller parcels. Um, and also reviewed at that meeting, uh, material from the, uh, from, uh, me and the building and zoning official about recommended, uh, changes to the village code. And basically what we're, what we're doing, uh, is to accommodate the request, we're essentially creating a new piece of the zoning code uh, that is directed at allowing, in fairly tight circumstances, properties to be developed without public water and utilities, which is, or without public water and sewer, which is what most of the rest of the zoning code requires. Um, so we've created that, and that was drafted in a way initially, or rather, the concept was given to the plan commission in a way that suggested 30,000 square feet was the minimum, and that 120 feet be the minimum width. The plan commission expressed a willingness to reduce the size of the lot, uh, and so that was worked in. But in the version that is drafted today, there isn't a reference to reducing the width. And if the village board is okay with a three-property concept there, uh, we can take to the plan commission a version that allows them to reduce the width to accommodate three parcels there, provided, as, as Mr. Geisenhut and I have talked about, that he can show on a CSM that adequate space exists for, um, two septic fields, an original and a replacement, uh, the potable well site, potable water well site, a house, and various other amenities that need to be accounted for in the property.
Yeah.
And so if he can do that, then we can get to three. And it's just a matter of, I needed, I wanted the village board to say it was okay to go to three because the concept was originally drafted based on what you talked about last August, which was two.
Right.
And that's really what we're at, and if you're okay with three, we can revise that draft that'll go to the planning commission next week.
Right.
Uh, for them to consider, and then, of course, that whole.
And that's, and that's what I just wanted to clarify.
But did the planning commission know that it wants to go to three?
They do.
Okay. You know, I, whatever you want to do, but, you know, it seems to me that we're changing the procedure on what we do. And when, when there's a change in what came from the plan commission, if there's a change, and the plan commission hadn't okayed it, and they come to the board, and then we rule on it, that's not right. That's why you have a plan commission. If you don't want, if you want to do it, the board can do whatever they want. If they don't like what the plan commission comes in, you got a three-quarters of the board can override a plan commission. It used to be, but we make, we make different rules as we go along in this game, but.
I, I guess I kind of made some calls, and, uh, I was put on this to discuss the width. Um, Dave wasn't looking to reduce the width originally, so, um, that's why I kind of proactively wanted to talk to my elected officials. Um, uh.
Yeah. And you know what I mean, I'm procedure.
Right, okay, yeah, I'm not familiar with the procedure, so.
Well, I mean, I'd even go along with it, if we have a special meeting after the plan commission next, next Monday after they okay this.
Sure, absolutely.
But when you turn around and say the plan commission hasn't known about, I mean, they know about it, but they didn't act on it, the board shouldn't act on it without, whatever, I just, I mean.
Remember, you will have a public hearing on that.
The, the, the real question is whether or not the board will go with the three or not. Rick, you made them, is that what your motion was?
Mm-hmm.
To recommend the three, I will second that motion. Any other discussion? Huh?
I'll call for a reading then.
The what?
The vote?
Yeah.
I will, I just, if anybody else has anything to add, and again, this is not approving this. This is simply giving a suggestion so that the plan commission knows, as Dave said.
But you're telling the plan commission we approved it?
No.
Wow.
The motion was to recommend the plan.
This is recommending.
That three is okay.
Whatever. Take a call vote.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed?
No.
That motion is carried. Thank you.
Thank you, appreciate it.
No, and I appreciate that thing, but you know where I'm coming from.
Yeah, no, I understand, that's the process, I, I get it, I, I, sorry, didn't mean to overstep the plan commission or anything like that. I just wanted to get somewhere, and I figured, talk to you guys, thank you, appreciate it.
Next item on the agenda is, uh, discussion impossible, considerations related. Next item on the agenda is discussion of possible considerations related to a resident request for dogway stations in the village. I'm gonna request to postpone that. We are going to postpone that until, let's go, next board meeting, I don't have the date on me.
Two twenty-six.
Two twenty-six. That'll be postponed until two twenty-six, not tabled postponed to a day certain, otherwise I gotta pull it off the table and go through that extra vote. And then we'll be here longer, just kidding. Actually, a discussion, do I even, do I need to vote on that, actually? Administrator Cox?
I don't know that you do, no.
You're the president, I guess you would say you're on.
No, no, I don't try to run like that, like I'm bigger than anybody else, I don't do that. No, I know, I just wanted to make sure procedi-, procedurally that we're. Uh, next item on the agenda is discussion of a proposed development north of county highway K, west of highway county KE in consideration of a motion to set a public, mind you, this is, I want you to understand, these are considerations. Consideration of a motion to set up a public hearing regarding proposed comprehensive plan amendments related to development in the area for Monday, March twenty-six, twenty eighteen, in conjunction with the regular village board meeting, contingent on the plan commission recommending amendments at its meeting on Monday, February nineteenth, twenty eighteen. Hello, gentlemen?
Good evening.
Can you announce for the minutes?
Yes, my name is Matt Newman from Newman Developments, and I'm here with Steve.
Hello?
All right, so I feel like I've got a bit of updating to do here. I think we've been working on this since about a year ago now. I think it was early two thousand seventeen were the first agendas that we were on in front of the plan commission. Early on, when we were working on this project, we were really working on everything to the, we'll say, west of the future county highway expansion. I'm guessing most of you are familiar with that proposed, the county's location for the proposed highway extension, is that right? So I don't need to go through that a whole lot. And so we were working on the area basically west of there, pretty much known as the Young Booth property, there's forty acres there. But then there is part of this that's actually owned by the Seetman, Seetman Realty. And we kind of incorporated that as well to make it all flow well together. Long story short, when we were going through that, there were a number of concerns from the Mary Hill residents to the west related to connectivity to the west. And so one of the things early on, I think we spent probably over two hours at the very first public meeting and a concept plan discussing whether that should be connected or not. We basically said, we're okay connecting it or not connecting it. It's really up to the village plan commission and village board, as well as the residents to the west, because we didn't really view that as a key access point for our neighborhood. So where we come to in this proposal and where we're at right now is that that would be a future emergency access. I know this is probably more detail on what's necessary for a comp plan amendment, but I wanna provide the background because it's our first time in front of the board here. So if any of you say enough's enough, just move forward, I can do that, but I wanna make sure you know where we've been and where we are today in this project. As we looked at it, in, in basically west of the county highway expansion is seventy-two single-family condominiums is what we have proposed. The reason we've have that designed as condominiums as opposed to regular single-family home sites is primarily due to the restraints or constraints that we have on that site. The first is about a twelve or fourteen acre woods in the northwest corner that you see we've completely preserved. There will be a sewer line that needs to come through there to service that part of the site. But by and large, we're planning on preserving that woods. And that, along with the landscaping buffers that are required along highway K, as well as a future highway expansion, you can see the amount of space that we have to basically carve out of this land. And it really didn't leave a lot of area for a regular, single-family development. So we're trying to be creative, cluster the use as much as we can. A condominium plat allows, or planned unit development allows for a bit more flexibility with lot lines, building locations, road profiles, things like that. So that's kinda why we're presenting it the way that we are. Then what ended up happening is we went through this process, is we met with the Seetmans, of course, because they own this forty acre parcel, basically everything, you know, from that line over. And they decided that it would make more sense to have us work on the entire area as one larger comprehensive master plan with the county highway and with the county. So what we did is we came up with a use that is a little bit more dense in, in its usage to the, call it south of that future highway area. That's very restricted with landscaping buffers, the right of way, I believe, is a hundred feet wide there. And then I think we have another either fifty or a hundred foot setback on both sides, I think it's a hundred feet actually on both sides. So what happens is that parcel also gets sandwiched pretty tight. So what we're proposing there is a duplex condominium type product, so it would be two units per building. Originally, we actually explored the idea of doing four unit buildings there, and we think this layout works better, and we think it's a little bit better use with the future single-family that Seetman has proposed in part of the master plan to the east of there. So we have worked this through extensively with them. We've also been through, I think, four, maybe five, plan commission meetings on this concept plan. And basically, the, the step that we're at right now is that the master comp plan basically has two changes that we're requesting. The first is something that is kinda what's driving this whole thing, and that is where the county road extension is planned to go. So I'm sure some of you are familiar with the history of this, whether it was gonna go to the south or whether it's gonna go to the north of highway K. This shows the northern route, which is the route that the county had planned for quite a while. And so that's part of the request for the comp plan amendment. The other request is for an increase in the overall number of home sites or, or units that could go on this eighty acres. I believe the number right now is right around a hundred, maybe a hundred and two units that could be allowed here. With the proposed change in the comp plan, I believe it's closer to a hundred and fifty units that would be allowed. We're proposing no more than the hundred and twenty-six that we have here. So we have fifty-four duplex condominium units here, seventy-two single-family condos to the west of the highway expansion. And we believe it's a good use, we believe it's something that's a really good complement to the community right now. There's a lot of single-family home sites, as well as very nice, single-family homes in and right around Heartland right now. And we felt like something a little bit different that doesn't exist in the market today, but something that can still be very high quality, but at the same time, something that can hopefully hit a slightly different price point, given the constraints we have here with basically being surrounded by highway K and the future extension of county highway KE.
Now, you've got no outlet coming from that on the K. They're all gonna go out on the, the Youngblood on the top there.
On the future expansion?
Yeah, on those, the Youngblood property, over, no, over this way.
There's nothing out on the K.
To the east, right there.
Yes, not right now. There's a driveway, of course, where the existing home is on top of the hill.
But as of now, what you've got there, where your hand is right now, that would go out on the, the Youngblood road up above on the north, there.
Yeah, these are the, these are the two main entrances.
Traffic flow will all go this way, and this would be emergency access.
So, so the Youngblood house, that outlet?
Oh, here.
Would go away.
Would go away. So nothing will come out on K.
That's the current proposal. Now, there's, I'm sure there's gonna be an important conversation here at some point. I don't, I don't know how much detail we need to get into tonight, but I know during this process, we need to work with the county on where they're gonna allow access to highway K. Because right now, the fort, the Young Booth property has a right to access where the driveway is. Granted, it's not ideal for a lot of traffic, but it is used. It's a challenging location there on top of the hill. You have great visibility, but it's not all that safe. On the Seetman, on the Seetman's parcel. Yeah, you can see a long way, it's just you can see what's coming, that's the problem. On the Seetman's parcel, we believe that there's still a farm access, right? It's kind of on the top, that also has a hill, too. It's not nearly as steep as the one on the Young Booth property, but there's a slight hill there. We believe there's an access point there, too. What we're hoping is to work with the county to come up with a strategy between now and whatever day in the future they decide to construct this entire new section. What we're hoping to do is come in off of highway K at that point. We don't know what they're gonna require in terms of intersection improvements there. Our hope is that some turn lanes and probably a two-way stop. I would be a little surprised that, if they would be in favor of a four-way stop there. But there's already a stop from the south as you come up to that T intersection. And if we put a stop sign from the north coming to that T intersection, that would be our hope, along with some other turn lane, you know, XL, Dcel lane type improvements to that intersection, until they do a full, you know, a full-blown highway extension all the way up to here. What we've heard from the county so far, cause I'm sure this is gonna be a question, is that that's at least seven years out, potentially longer. The reason it took us frankly, like, a year to get to this point where we're talking about the comp plan amendment and actually going into the annexation, rezoning, everything else after this, is it took us a long time to work with the county here to figure out if or when they might build that. We were trying to get that accelerated quicker in their budget process. We had multiple meetings with county staff, as well as the village, about if or when or how it would get paid for. And I, I believe the, the most recent that we're aware of is not gonna happen anytime in the near future. So we need to plan how to move forward with this until the time the county determines that's necessary.
And they'll all be sewered anyway, cause it's in the village, isn't it?
It'll all be sewored, yeah, actually, the sewer from this area flows this direction, and the sewer from that side flows that direction.
So then you're saying, you're not, this is not gonna even be considered to be done until the county does it? And Paul Decker was here a couple, last time, he said seven years to think about, to get it on the plan, and then three to four years to finance it? So are you looking at developing this in seven to ten years?
We're actually looking, I'm sorry, I should've been more clear about that. We're looking to develop this literally as soon as this fall. So what our, what our plan is.
With, with what road?
Well, we're gonna work with the county to figure out, we have, we believe rights to two access points. We're hoping that we can work with the county to have one access point in the future location where the county highway's gonna go. If they allow us to do that.
How many cars then will go through that little intersection?
Right now, or?
I mean, will there?
Will there be added? Are you asking, how many are we gonna add to it, or how many currently?
Cars when we go through that little teeny baby intersection that people are getting in accidents all the time? I mean, are we putting more cars in that until we can get the other road, or? It just seems like there's a lot of traffic up there, and you're putting, I see all those little yellow dots, and seems like, I'm sure there's a couple cars each coming down to that stop sign. We like that lunchtime at Culvers.
Yeah, so a couple, a couple of things. Fortunately, there's not actually a Culvers there, but we will have to do traffic impact analysis, I'm sure. We have not authorized the TIA at this point. I'm expecting the county will request us to do that when we get into conversations about specific access points. If that intersection is overloaded, then we're going to have to find another access point to this property, which, again, we already have two, it's just I don't think they're in the safest locations. I don't think the county's really gonna want us to use those. The challenge here, frankly, and you're kinda, you're getting right to the heart of this conversation. This property, this property in particular, but not just this, even the Young Booth property, has really been waiting and waiting and waiting. And now the county's saying it's another seven to ten plus years out. And at this point, we're saying, that's okay, that that's seven to ten years out, but we still wanna move forward with the development. And the village of Heartland has every right in the world, if you choose to, to approve a development plan here. We're gonna work with the county to try to preserve their rights to utilize that land in the future to build that highway extension. I guess there's a possibility that the county says, we're not gonna approve, you know, this intersection to the north here, at which point we're gonna say, that's okay with us, but then we want, we wanna keep the access we have, which I think all of us are gonna say is not a great idea, but if that's all, that's all we can get, that's all we can get. And then we would have an access point out to Winkleman, of course.
So the road doesn't come there? And then if you make the plans to start building all that stuff, and then you find out, geez, we really can't build this the way we want to, we're gonna have to change that? There's no chance that, once you start, it's never gonna change? Your plans on how to develop that whole area? I mean, if the road does not go through there for seven to ten years?
I mean, if I can throw something in, I, I think I'm being pretty accurate here. Honestly, that gap that you're talking about is seven to twenty-five years. Because the county could keep on saying, there's no need, there's no need. I, I just wanna make sure that we're being as accurate as possible and we don't get caught up just on the ten, cause it may never get built, and they end up saying, fine, road's fine, heavy traffic's okay, but just stick with it. There's no guarantees here.
Yeah, this has been a challenge for us, and I think for the Seetmans, as well as for the Young Blues for a long time. It's been a challenge for us for a year. It's been a challenge for them for a lot longer than that. And I think it's a challenge for the village for a lot longer than that. And what we're saying is, we're ready to move forward with the development here. And if or when the county builds it, we're gonna preserve some space for them to put their county highway in. If they say that they do not allow us, or they won't allow us an access here, then I, I can tell you, we're gonna have an access over here somewhere, because we already have an access there, it's gonna come up into the neighborhood. So will there be a slight revision? Of course, there'll be a slight revision in this plan. Will it function substantially similar to what you see here? Yes. It's just, our belief is that improving that intersection, it's already a dangerous intersection, and improving it such that it can last for another ten plus years is a better move than putting an access point, just because we have the right to do it on top of a hill.
You're gonna force the county into doing something, because that, that's a horrible intersection, Youngblood Road, and, and then you go down to Winkleman.
Winkleman's worse, I think.
Between some, yeah. And that's what I told the, the county when they came here. I said, you're gonna be forced, and they won't do anything until they're forced to.
So I drive this road every morning, sometimes every night, too, but I take my son and daughter to school here every morning. And my opinion, although I'm not a highway engineer by any stretch, but driving the road, you get a pretty good feel for what's going on there every morning. I see the school buses going by. And I'm coming from the west, going to the east. The, the speed limit goes to forty-five miles an hour, less than a half mile from this intersection. If we were able to get the county between the village and us as a developer asking for these types of things, if we were to get them to reduce the speed limit to thirty-five just through that intersection, through Young Booth, I think that would go a long ways, cause that's where you come up and over the hill and back down. I think if you just reduced it like it is further west, if you keep it at thirty-five miles an hour through the intersection, I think that's a big step. Also, again, controlling not just the speed, but also creating some passing lanes and turn lanes in that location, I think would go a long ways to help. It doesn't fix Winkleman, unfortunately. The only way Winkleman gets fixed is if they actually would build this all the way through. So what we're trying to do and what our proposal is, again, we have to meet with the county, but it's a cart and horse thing. We need to keep the development process rolling forward so we can get to the point where we're willing to spend the tens of thousands of dollars in engineering and traffic impact analysis studies to tell us what they will allow and what the design will look like to make that improved, safer intersection.
So you're willing to spend that money for ten to fifteen years out? I mean, we've been talking about that road since I've been here, and it's only been twenty years. And Dick's been here probably since the horses were here. I mean, they've been talking about that road. Now, you're gonna invest money in, in that development with, waiting on the county?
Well, here's what we're investing in. We're investing in, if, if we can get through the comp plan amendment here, as well as, we gotta go back to the plan commission, then come back to the board for a public hearing in March, I believe it is. And if we can get through the annexation for the Young Booth property and rezoning, at that point, we're confident enough to move forward. And at that time, what we need to know from the county is, where along highway K would you like us to bring our access out? And again, I've got ideas on what I think makes the most sense. They can't tell us we don't have access at all. That's not an option. We already have one, and we think two access points. So not granting an access isn't an, an option. So I, I guess the short answer to your question is, yes, I'm confident, cause I know that we have an access point. I actually think we have two. But that will all get flushed out as we go through, they're gonna first say, do a TIA, we're gonna do a TIA. And then they're gonna look at the existing traffic count and the added traffic count that we're gonna add. Now, again, we're, we might be the straw here that's, you know, breaking proverbial back, but we're not the one that created the amount of traffic that's there today. So our job is to figure out, can we improve an already bad situation to help it last for the next seven to ten years or twenty years by making some improvements at that intersection? And I think we can do that without doing the full.
The concern that I have is that it's a darn road. You know, with eighty-three, the county came up with a great thing, and they did a check, and they said that, you know, they wanna change it into a four-lane highway all the way up to sixteen. And they did a survey, and they counted cars, and they counted traffic, and they came up with, our share was only gonna be seven million dollars. The other counties are gonna pay three million, and three million, you know, the town and then the city. And that's seven million dollars just for to expand eighty-three. Now, you get up there, when the county comes in to do that, are they gonna say, we want the road expanded and, and Heartland's gonna pay, you know, seven million dollars or two mil-, two dollars? I mean, are, that road, it gets, gets, concerns me what happens with that road, because I, I just don't know, well, if we wanna pick that up.
Well, I asked the county their debt when they were there, too, and we wouldn't pay for that. If we wanted to move it where we want it to, we might have to put some money in. But they're, they're, you're obligated to fix K so that it holds the traffic. And you can't, that's what he told me anyhow.
And without us having to pay for it?
Without us paying. And when I think about that, it's good, if that, if we don't annex that piece of property and build on it, they're gonna build in there, Townham, it's in Townham Merton, I think. And they could put in houses in there with no sewer and water. And I don't like that, I, 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 just to have the sewer in, in that area, to keep that groundwater halfway decent. That's what I'm more in favor of.
So to, to give some updates also, obviously, this has been, before I was even in this chair, this was going on, and it was, one of the first meetings I went to that was going through transition. This came up, where everything just made some headway, cause I want, you know. This came up where everything just made some headway because I want, you know, if I was sitting in the seats or watching on the camera right now, I'd be saying, what was the problem? If you knew you had access the whole time? It's my understanding that the whole time we actually didn't know, uh, that access would be granted and there was this road issue. Well, we just found out that this road isn't going to be built in five years or three years, it's going to be built in 25. So to bring everybody up to speed, there is some things, and I'm even saying, this is actually the first time I wasn't able to be at the meeting. So I was, the first time I'm seeing you guys, but this also has to go back to plan commission to talk about, you know, this density was created because of how much it was going to cost due to the road. You know, we have to look at the density. We have to, uh, you guys have to deal with the county so that we know access points. There's annexation, there's so many parts that go to this, but what we did gain in going forward is that it doesn't have to wait for the road to be built and honestly, that road may never be built. It really, it really might never be built. I mean, maybe they'll widen the other highways. I don't know. Uh, but what this was for, uh, there's some additional items here, but from my end, I just wanted to make sure everybody was kind of up to date on, on what's happening there because there was some requests about-
See what I think?
Not having enough info, but now everybody should have the full info.
And what delayed that is the fact that we tried to work with the county-
Yes.
To get that Youngblood and that road where you are coming up Youngblood and taking a la, a right and, and going a half a block and taking a left because it's 7 o'clock in the morning and 4 o'clock in the afternoon. You got a, you got a problem. And people just kind of, there is no hurry up there then.
That's precisely what we've been tr, I guess, trying to prompt the last year. In fairness, though, the first few months it was, I think, everybody, the village included, trying to figure out, are we serious about moving this forward? Because there have been a lot of people that have looked at specifically the Young Blue property because it's been on the market, I think, for literally years. It's, it's a really, really hard site to develop for a whole series of reasons. This is one of them. Um, I haven't touched on some of the other challenges that we had early on and some other challenges I know that will still be coming. It's, that's a hard parcel to develop in the Village of Heartland the way it sits today. This is the biggest obstacle to it is this road. When we then were able to work with the Seetmans, because, you know, we know them pretty well, they're in the same kind of business we are. And we said, hey, why don't we try to do this whole thing together instead of doing it, you know, piece by piece? And they were agreeable to that and truthfully, um, I don't know if they're having fatigue on that county highway or not, but after this long, they might be. Um, the bottom line is, we said, we're going to run forward with this thing. We, we always knew we had access. The question is where? Because the Young Blue property right now only has one access, it's a driveway. So I don't think the county has the option to say, we won't give you any access. The question is going to be, where is the most safe location to get our residents, our future residents on and off the county highway system before they're ready to do the full improvement?
Yeah, and that's what they said. That's what they said. They went tonight. It's just figuring out the logistics.
And what we're here to do, the reason we're requesting this is, if we're going to have to plan around this county highway, which is a 300 foot wide, multiple acres of land right through the middle of our project. You know, we need a little help, right? And so what, the help we're requesting from the village is some flexibility on density and type of product so that we can plan the site to still make sense, given the constraints of county highways in the south and a county highway cutting right through the middle and a big woods that I think we all want preserved on the northwest corner of the site. So with those constraints, this is a design we came up with. I'm sure it'll get modified a little bit as we go through the engineering process and where the county tells us the intersection is. But our belief is it's a really complimentary use in terms of product to the community. Um, and I remain pretty confident we're going to be able to work something out with the county here if for some reason we can't. Um, I guess, you know, we'll be back here letting you know what we find out, but at the end of the day, I'm pretty confident we're going to get some access that's going to work.
So you're going to leave that road open then, like if it's 10 years before the county? Then you'll be able to use that because you're not going to, you can't develop anything on it?
Well, yeah, right. What we want to actually do again, if, if, if our proposal is received well at the county, if the TIA supports, if the engineering supports, if anything else, we'll actually build from here up to here and our access points, our, our permanent access points will be installed right away. So this won't be a county highway type road, you know, don't expect a really wide 55 mile an hour road. Expect a rural cross section, you know, 22 foot wide paved surface with ditches that allow our traffic to get from here up to here where they go in, instead of trying to drive them in off of highway K. Yeah, so that's what we're going to propose, but again, we don't know until we get into it with the county whether they'll allow that. If they don't, then I suspect you're going to see an entrance right here where their driveway is, coming up that hill.
And to go along with that, just so everybody's aware, this is going back to the plan commission. Because as I've kind of, I mean, yeah, we're kind of resetting because remember we designed this all, not we. They designed this, but it was under us saying, hey, that road's got to go in. Now with that road not going in, that may have density impact. So, but it has to go back to the plan commission and we have people there asking, uh, to relook at it. So go ahead.
So let me just remind you of process as I, as you see in the rather long description of this particular item. Um, what I'm, what I would ask, uh, on behalf of Newmans, uh, for the village board to do tonight is to set that public hearing. But just as a reminder, uh, next Monday night, the plan commission will undertake its second review of the Newman's request to change the comprehensive plan related to the road and the density. Um, the, the plan commission may at that point, uh, adopt a resolution, making a recommendation to the village board. That recommendation would come back to you at the end of this month in the form of the first reading of an ordinance. You would see it a couple more times at this meeting and then you would have that public hearing in March before you would take an action on it. If in fact you take that action and you change the comprehensive plan, uh, in accordance with the plan commission's request, or recommendation rather, then a lot of this other information that we're talking about gets dealt with in more detail because the Newmans would have to finalize that plan and come through again with the details of exactly how much density, exactly how are the roads laid out, exactly where are the entries? Um, exactly how are the utilities being handled? You know, all of the exact details, including as Matt alluded to, we have to do the annexation or the village has to consider the annexation. All of that comes back through and that process really doesn't even get started until April. Um, and probably runs a few months.
So tonight we need to set a public hearing?
Yep, and I would encourage you to set that public hearing conditioned on the plan commission making a recommendation at next Monday's meeting.
So that would be, uh-
So you would set a public hearing for March 26th?
For the first, first meeting in March?
March 26th.
March 26th, okay.
Conditioned on the plan commission making a recommendation at its meeting on the 19th.
Okay.
That would be my recommended motion.
Also move that we set up a meeting for the 28th?
26th.
26th. Pursuant to what Dave said.
Yeah, I'll second that.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded. Any other discussion? Um, one thing that's, this is a tough one when we're missing two people from the body.
You're just setting a hearing.
Well, what it, yeah, okay, um-
We got a majority basically.
No, you do. You guys will have a majority and I'm going to say, without the full body, we can't do it, so.
I mean, it's not that-
No, it's not, it's not an argument. I'm just saying without the full body here, I don't feel comfortable because there's a lot of questions that they may have. I'm just saying for me, but you're going to have a majority, so. Uh, any other discussion on that? Uh, it's been moved and seconded to set the public hearing for Monday, March 26, 2018 pursuant to what may happen at the plan commission meeting on February 19th. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Aye. That motion is carried. You guys, anything else to add or?
No, I think we'll be seeing a lot of each other over the next few months, so we have a lot to work out.
And just so, it's not a, that vote just sets the hearing, so it doesn't guarantee, I know we have plan commission coming up and stuff like that. I just want to make sure for people that are here that they know.
I think we'll be here next week for the plan commission meeting.
Okay, uh, probably.
We might be here every meeting for the next four months, but thank you.
All right. Next item is a consideration of a motion to approve US Bank as payment card provider upon termination of the village's existing provider agreement.
Um, so the point of this is, the Village of Heartland was part of a purchasing card consortium. Waukesha County was the, let's say, main operator of it. There were about 130 to 180 different municipalities, school districts, sanitary districts. Everybody was a part of it. Larger the spend, the higher the rebate that we all received. That went out for bid. JP Morgan Chase was not comparable to US Bank, so the consortium died. As of, I believe it's May or June 30th, the consortium will be ending. And we have found a new provider in US Bank. We're piggybacking onto the contract they have with the state of Wisconsin. And our rebate that we receive will actually be higher. It should be going from, uh, it should stay the same or go higher depending on our purchasing. But if we decided to stay with JP Morgan Chase, our rebate would drop by about a percent, so it's, it's the best option we have.
Also move the, approve the move to US Bank. Credit card.
Second.
Been moved and seconded. Any discussion? All in favor? Aye. All opposed? That motion is carried. Next item on the agenda is consideration of a motion to approve a contract with Five Star Fireworks Company and a Conomwalk in the amount of up to $16,000 for the 2018 fireworks display.
We budgeted that much anyhow.
Yep.
We did.
So I, I move we accept it.
I'll second it. Any discussion? All in favor? Aye. All opposed? That motion is carried for the fireworks. Consider, next item is the consideration of a motion to approve the job description for the position of public works laborer and custodian.
These are, as I mentioned, they're in my memo, there are revisions to the custodian, uh, job description to ensure that it describes the position well. As you all recall, as part of the reorganization that we've done recently, we're going to be, uh, we've proposed to add, and the village is budgeted to add, a part-time custodian here at the village hall to supplement what we have today. Uh, additionally, as I indicated in the memo, the maintenance laborer position down at the DPW uh, was previously described essentially in the collective bargaining agreement. And when that bargaining agreement went away, we did not draft a job description. So this is really just to create, just to formalize the description for that position. Okay?
Anybody, I'll make a motion to approve that.
I'll second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any discussion? All in favor? Aye. All opposed? That motion is carried for both positions to, or to accept them. Job description of both positions. Next we have announcements and I, hopefully everybody was safe through all the snow. And the cold, but other than that, I don't, does anybody else from the board have anything? Any announcements?
Did you just mention the primary?
Oh, uh, go ahead. You can go off, but I'm just going to mention while you're walking to the podium that the primary in Heartland will be February 20th. Um, and that voting is here at the Cottonwood Avenue Address Municipal Building. All of it's done here. And, uh, polls are open from 7:00 AM until 8:00 PM. Here in Heartland for our first primary in, I think, 25 years.
I just wanted to make an observation on what happened here tonight, is that-
Absolutely. This is your-
Um, my name is Tom Brass. I have, uh, property of 151 East Capital Drive. Business owner in the Village of Wiscon, uh, Village of Heartland for 25 years. Um, what I saw here tonight was interesting. Um, first of all, my family's background, we've had 35 years in a bar and restaurant business. That's where I grew up in. Bar, restaurant banquet facility. I understand the importance of a liquor license, believe me. And there was a time for public hearing to be here and Nugent's did not, decided not to get up here and plead their case. I commend the board for allowing him to get up here and voice his opinion. In the past, I know he would have been told to be seated and possibly escorted out of the room. He allowed that and I respect that. That being said, this subject's going to come up again. And I just want to let this board know that, and the public know this because this is all recorded. Basically, you have one license here for $400. Very reasonable license. All licenses are owned by the Village of Heartland. Unlike other communities where when a person buys that license, that business owns a license which becomes very valuable. That being said, we have two reserve licenses which come at a very hefty price of $10,000. And I agree with trustee Meyer that a, a large chain or corporation can probably afford that. But let's be honest, I foresee for the future of downtown Heartland or the Village of Heartland, including the area over there on Hartbrook Drive, another restaurant, full-service restaurant with dining in the evening coming into this community. And I hope it will be a small business owner as we've had in the past. And the last thing I would like to see, if somebody turned their head against Village of Heartland, because now they have to come up with $10,000 that once it's invested, they lose it. They're gone. They don't get it back. We have that one license for $400 and I think what the board has to look at is what is the proper use for that license? The Pink Mocha is open for breakfast and lunch. I went by there at quarter to seven this evening and they were closed. I agree, they could sell Bloody Marys on Saturday and Sunday. They do have a beer and liquor license, which is a great advantage for her business for the hours she's open. But it's not the best use of this license. And I hope in the future that when this comes up, the board looks at that and not just takes the idea that we want to be a nice village and a good neighbor. Look at the use of that $400 license and that it's being fulfilled to the best asset for this community, for the Village of Heartland. You look at what's happened to the downtown Heartland in the last 11 years. Since Palmer's came in, Zesty's come, has come in and has benefited Margaret's business at the Heartland Inn. 11 years ago, he could shoot a cannon down East Capital Drive. It's brought many people down into Heartland and it has benefited the Pink Mocha with the people that are coming here. This board, many of you who are on it have been very, have done very well for the Pink Mocha in the past. When she was removed from where they had to be, this village board took care of them financially very well. And they have no complaints about how this village has treated them. So I'm just saying tonight, as I saw the vote, there's going to be a lot of heat probably from this. But I'm saying, use it for the right purpose. It's an important, very important liquor license. And we're going to have the $10,000 and when that big, the big corporation comes in, it's, uh, Wings or whatever it is, they can afford that. They're not going to be in downtown Heartland though, I can tell you that, or out where, where she is in that, in that strip mall. But it could be where the bank's supposed to be or next to that and they will pay the money. But that is an important license and I just want the board, because this is going to come up again, and please look at it that way. What's the best use of that $400 license? Thank you.
Tom, I'd like to say one, one, make one comment.
Yeah.
On that $10,000 license, I believe after a period of time, they do get refunded $3,000 a year.
Not anymore.
Not anymore?
The state took that away.
Okay, sorry about that. It's been canceled.
That's right. It's, uh, you're, you put up $10,000, it's a lot of money for a small business owner, which I predict within the next three years, if not shorter, you will see another full-service restaurant in downtown Heartland. Thank you.
Thanks, Tom.
Thank you, Tom.
Just a couple of reminders. Chief Baggins retirement party is on the horizon. Forgive me, I don't, do you have the date?
28th.
28th. Uh, it'll be, it'll be a nice event. The, I wanted to give a shout out to the many volunteers paid on call, staff members at the Heartland Fire Department for the month of January. As you saw in my board brief, the fire department answered 79 calls for service and they, uh, never heard a complaint. So I'm excited that we have the best fire department in the Village of Heartland. We do. I will tell you that we have the best fire department in the county. A little biased, but, uh, wanted to just thank them all for their devotion. They, they work a lot of hours and all times of the, of the day, so. Uh, two more announcements. Uh, Sunday, March 4th, we're going to have a Battle of the Badges. The fire department hockey team will take on the police department hockey team made up of, uh, members from all around the state. That'll be taking, uh, place at the UW Milwaukee Panther Arena. It's a really good time. And, uh, the price of that is $20 a ticket, but it also includes a buffet and some fundraiser action items. And also a 5 o'clock ticket for the Milwaukee Admirals versus the Scranton Penguins. And all proceeds go to the, um, burn camp, helping, uh, individuals that have been burned. And last but not least is our, on the horizon also on March 24th is the fire department extrication fundraiser. We will have lots of fun, live music, food, entertainment and, uh, some live auction items that will be held on March-
24th.
24th. That's it. Thank you.
Thank you, chief. Any other announcements from the board?
I would make a motion that we adjourn.
Seconded.
It's been moved-
Unless you want to hang it up.
It's been moved and seconded, it's been moved and seconded that we adjourn. Uh, I'm going to throw this in there and say, historically, Heartland kept the meetings under a half hour. I am shooting to shorten them and have failed miserably in the last three meetings. I will continue to move forward with that goal.